All right, welcome to the March 12, 2025, meeting of the Redmond Planning Commission. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We will start with a roll call. Commissioner Coleman.
Present.
Commissioner Copely.
Present.
Commissioner Gagnier.
Present.
Commissioner Van Nyman.
Present.
And Vice Chair Woodier.
Present.
And I am Chair Weston. Commissioner partners excused tonight. Thank you to the following staff for being present. Jeff Churchill, Lauren Alpert, Ian Lefcourt, Becky Frye, Ojer Kardanas, and Chip Cornwell. I look for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's approved. And then I also look for a motion to approve the meeting minutes from February 26, 2025.
So moved.
Thank you. Next up is our time for public comment and items from the audience. Before we start, I just want to remind everyone that RCW 4217A 555 prohibits any public comment in support of or opposition to ballot propositions, measures, or candidates. Who do we have tonight? Tonight, we have David M. to make public comment. He has three minutes, and please state your full, your name and address. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm David Morton, Redmond 98053. I wish to comment on Agenda Item 6, Draft 2.0 of Community Design Standards. First, it may be helpful to further clarify how the consolidation and streamlining of design regulations maintains design quality. Second, ensuring adequate enforcement and incentives will be key to successful implementation of universal design and inclusive features. Third, consider addressing the potential impacts on existing residential communities caused by the transition from suburban to urban standards. Fourth, more guidance on alternative design compliance pathways might ensure flexibility without compromising design integrity. Fifth, consider how the height and bulk regulations interact with neighborhood character and pedestrian-friendly design principles. Sixth, the proposed sustainability and resiliency features could include incentives for climate-responsive strategies such as green roofs, solar panels, battery storage, and advanced stormwater management. The Green Building Incentive Program, or GBP, has requirements for sustainability such as electrification, energy efficiency, embodied carbon reduction, and water conservation. Additional incentives and flexibility could enhance participation and effectiveness. The GBP mentions incentives tied to zoning regulations but lacks details on how the incentives work. There could be greater clarity on the benefits of incentives for developers who exceed baseline sustainability requirements. Given the ambitious energy performance standards, encourage a phased compliance approach where developers gradually meet higher thresholds while receiving incremental incentives. Redmond could integrate GBP incentives with existing state or federal sustainability programs to maximize participation and financial feasibility. And the 10% to 30% embodied carbon reduction requirements could be met in various ways such as carbon offsets or innovative material technologies. Seventh, the design standards could address how they support affordability and housing diversity while maintaining high standards. Eighth, it's important that parking design and connectivity align with evolving transportation trends, including transit-oriented development. And ninth, the standards could specify how they fit in with Redmond's broader development goals, including economic development, walkability, and historic preservation. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? No. Okay. That's it for tonight. All right. In that case, we will move on to our study session on the 2025 Housing Amendments. Bringing up Ian Lefcourt.
Thank you, Chair. Hello, Commissioners. My name is Ian Lefcourt. I use he/him pronouns, and I am a senior planner with Long Range Planning. And today, we're here to talk about housing. For our agenda, we'll introduce the amendment package, talk about the purpose, accomplishing the purpose, and the relationship to the comprehensive plan that all of you worked so hard on. We'll talk about what's included. We'll review some examples of amendments, and then we'll lead into the discussion itself with a quick review of the timeline for adoption. The topics largely fall into three buckets for the amendments. Middle Housing Implementation, with a focus on transportation, code adjustments, and legislative compliance. The magnitude of the amendment package is mostly cleanups or middle housing implementation and promoting better outcomes from relatively modest amendments. It's important to recognize that these amendments are not a departure from the previously approved and adopted comprehensive plan vision or intent. In fact, the opposite. The amendments are all about polishing up the code to comply and align with that vision and intent. There is also two state legislative items that we must comply with. That's not really a discussion point. All jurisdictions in Washington must comply with the state law. And so ultimately, the scope of our discussion today is not taking the lid off previous discussion on policies, approaches, or strategies, but really focusing on the clarity, brevity, accuracy, and accessibility of the language in the amendments. Accomplishing the purpose for middle housing, we can see that we touched three of the Redmond Zoning Code chapters. We're going to update the code to include middle housing. And when we read that bullet, some of the amendments are literally just adding the phrase, "middle housing." We'll have an example on that later. And then we'll also update the code to support middle housing. I think one of the most important components for the transportation component is expanding the opportunities for middle housing by amending the requirements for street improvements. Basically, things like allowing more private ways, private streets, and reducing the burden from, say, going from a 20-foot private road to a 30-foot right-of-way with all these improvements in just because we added a duplex or two. Accomplishing the purpose, as you can see from that high-quality graphic, it's kind of polishing up the code, cleaning it up. Lots of different chapters here. I will not read all of them. Correcting errors, discrepancies, references is a big one. We're trying to reduce ambiguity. You, this is a constant through-line through the Redmond 2050 effort, is trying to make the code as accessible as it can while also being as specific as it can for both internal and external readers. The adjustments also help align with Redmond 2050 intent, often making explicit which that what was implicit, and some other minor updates like improving accuracy, clarity, and consistency. Accomplishing the purpose for legislation, thanks to Becky's 2025 Part III Code Package with that enormously clean and streamlined reformatting, this only touches 2104, and it complies with two recent changes in state law. The first is concerning a list of things local jurisdictions cannot do when it comes to converting non-residential buildings to residential. The code amendments just itemize them right there in the code, so everyone can reference it quickly and understand what's there. It does not particularly impact a lot of our residential work, because affordable housing still applies, safety standards still apply, density still applies. It just helps reduce some barriers to converting those buildings. And the second one concerns co-living and residential uses. This is just a minor update across the board for the NR zone in the use table, just allowing this specific type of use in compliance with state law. Again, not really a lot to discuss here, because it is mandated by the state, and so we're going to do it. The amendment package has the following relationship to the comprehensive plan. It advances housing choices. This will help increase the housing supply and diversity. It will help reduce regulatory barriers to housing types. It will expand capacity for middle housing, not so much through literal density but through pragmatic financial considerations. And importantly, it implements housing policies 7 and 14 very explicitly, but broadly supports most of the policies represented in the housing element. It also supports the zoning consolidation, which was a vital component of Redmond 2050. It supports the residential zoning consolidation, which began back with neighborhood zones in 2024. That's often where a lot of these code-reference cleanups are coming from, just all of those zones that went away and these two new zones that came in. And it implements Policy 24 from the Land Use Element, speaking specifically to those zoning consolidations for neighborhood policies. Ah, the best example of all. It's a little small on the screen, but this section shall apply to new commercial, industrial, or residential construction multifamily. Wait a minute. What was missing? Middle housing on infill lots. As a reminder, in our journey from a suburb to a city, most of the previous residential structure standards basically only had two categories: single-family or multifamily. So many of the amendments in the package before you are just adding that middle piece of middle housing. The second example here is adding a paragraph explicitly describing how the gross-floor area is calculated for the neighborhood residential zone. No ambiguity, no referencing two or three other pieces and then interpreting together. This makes it very clean, explicit, and reduces duplicity. Here is content related to complying with House Bill 1042. The exceptions keep going past 1 and 2. There's like many more. But this is pretty much verbatim. The legislative direction reviewed by our current planners in the Development Services Center to align with our zoning code and ensure that it is manifesting both the requirement and intent of the legislative direction while also aligning with our internal zoning code. Staff endeavors to reduce the amount of review Commissioners have to do for wordsmithing and proofreading. This might be one of the exceptions where we are really asking you to go over it. Because the intent of this is so focused on clarity, accessibility, proofreading, and errors, we're hoping that you can help us catch any of the components that we may have missed after reviewing it so many times. The review timeline. We have our study session tonight on March 12. At our next meeting, we will have our public hearing. It has been duly noticed in the newspaper. The materials are published on the website at this URL, 2025 Code Updates. After that, our first meeting in April 9. We hope to have a study session and close, end recommendation, and then April 23, a report approval. As a reminder, state requirements direct local jurisdictions to adopt their middle housing standards by the end of June this year. So we are on a bit of a tight timeline to make sure we get this all polished up, so it can go on to council for that full adoption process. There's the URL, and we can welcome questions. I've got a issues matrix at the ready.
Right, thank you. Commissioners, any questions? Right, I might kick off. I know that we're within a fairly scripted area, thanks to state law. But I did want to ask something that came up about retrofitting existing commercial and mixed-use buildings, just to understand the intent of this as it'll play out in Redmond. So looking around at buildings that, to my eyes, seem like they could be candidates for this, there are also the buildings that have a lot of small businesses or a lot of, where we're already a little bit concerned about what would be lost if they were redeveloped in the commercial space specifically. Is there any way to balance, like making sure that we actually maintain the commercially mandated space, or is it really out of our hands once this is passed?
For that component specifically, it is a bit out of our hands, specifically through this zoning code approach. Now, the city is working on both preservation for economic vitality, anti-displacement, and replacement, but that's a more programmatic approach that is being led by Philly Marsh. For this, it kind of is just state law. Here's the zoning code. With that said, many of the structures that are non-residential use are pretty difficult to convert into residential. The, the plate of the building often doesn't have as many windows that would be appropriate for actual livable units. So the likelihood of this actually occurring in Redmond seems relatively unlikely for conversions. But that programmatic approach that Philly will lead will help mitigate that concern.
Okay. Because if there's any way to specifically state, like if there are active business licenses at the address, or especially like longstanding active business licenses, to discourage the redevelopment of those buildings for residential, that actually feels very important to me. That's, that's a lot of our small businesses. It's a lot of our doctor's offices, dentist's offices. Like, these are services people really need in the community.
Understood. We can conduct an analysis of our code and provide that in the issues matrix for next time.
Or possibly just even include the note to pass along for the programmatic approach, because I understand that there's a state law requirement here, but it's still just the nuances of the way that's going to look in Redmond. Really making as much of an effort to preserve that space. We know there's a need for housing, but there's also a need for all these services and businesses, so.
Just to clarify, so is the direction to staff to communicate that sentiment to Philly for their efforts?
I think that's right. Unless you feel that there's actually a way to modify this language to include a preference, which it sounds like there may not be that wiggle room.
I don't think there is. I will check with Philly, and I will certainly pass that sentiment on.
Okay. And if we could just capture in the matrix, because I suspect that council's going to have a similar question.
Can do.
Thank you.
I have two follow-up questions, one for Ian. First, a comment. You are so enthusiastic today, and I love it. It has been so easy to follow, so thank you, whether it was caffeine-related or thank you. You said, is it Philly or Philip Marsh? I don't know who that is or what that is.
Yes, Philly Marsh is our Economic Development Manager.
Okay, so that's an individual, not a, okay. And then you seem very passionate. I'm excited to follow your vision, but there's a lot that I don't know. I don't know about lifelong licenses?
Oh, no. It's, there's not a specific category. It's more just the areas of the city that are, I could even see being possible, where we would take mixed-use or commercial space that exists now.
It seemed like you had places in mind. Will you help me? Because I want to follow your vision, but I'm not.
It just, I was sort of going, where do we even, there aren't that many places around the city where we even have commercial space or mixed-use space. So it's sort of just going through and being like, where are we talking? Just on the map and what's there now? I can't see it necessarily being transformed, but I would just really, having just gone through the Redmond 2050 process, really looked at those zones and felt quite protective of making sure that businesses that are in Redmond can stay in Redmond. Like, we spent a lot of time talking about doctors and dentists and services specifically, and just making sure that there's still a place in Redmond for those businesses, because a lot of time housing is a more profitable and, like, easier rental stream than those commercial leases, which kind of come and go with the market. And so just making sure that that commercial space is available, especially the older commercial space. I think the law said three years was the limit, but I doubt most of the brand-new, or maybe I don't know. But it just, making sure that what we have zoned is commercial, stays commercial if possible. Because, I mean, I understand the motivation behind the state law, and I think actually Redmond's really much, very much in alignment with it, where we're just very pro-new housing. But this really feels like it comes possibly at the expense of specific.
Small business.
Small businesses. Commissioner Copely.
Ian, is there a shortlist of candidates for residential conversion, or is that something that Philly Marsh is going to be looking at creating?
So the community input on interest in this is effectively zero. There's been one community partner who has shown interest in when the compliance is going to go live, but they do not have a specific project in mind. So I don't think there would actually be much impact from this zoning code change at all.
Any other questions? All right, this was short and sweet. So we'll expect a public hearing at our next meeting. Commissioners, just as you're reading through, to prepare for that, if you have anything else, feel free to send it to Ian by email, or else we'll go through the matrix again at our next meeting.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you. All right, next up. Do people want a quick break? We barely started. No, we're going to keep going. Excellent. All right, our next item here is the Study Session on Design Standards in Part III of the 2025 Code Package for Redmond 2050. So I'd like to bring up Becky Frye, Lauren Alpert, and Ojer Kardanas.
So this evening, we're going to continue work we started last week. I do want to introduce via this presentation the new topics that have been published. But once we get through this presentation, we'll go back into the issues matrix, and we'll try to close as many of those as we can. There's a few that are going to stay open, and then we can start adding new. Before I kick in, I do want to mention one thing. As of today, we, this afternoon, and I'll send you guys a direct link to it, we did publish an updated version of 2158 that includes the final piece, which is the Sustainability and Resiliency section that was pending in your packet. It also includes everything else that's a part of this package, all the miscellaneous cleanups of zoning names, cross-references, and that kind of thing. And so all of that will be formally in your next packet, but we'll get you a link to it so you can see the newer version before the packet goes out. So what is in your packet today was an overview of all of the new stuff, including a table of changes, which hopefully you found useful to identify where things were mostly just moved and kind of tweaked, and where things were substantially updated or new. And that sections 2000, 3000, 4000, 5000, and 7000 are in that packet. 2000 is brand-new. It provides additional guidance on the incentives package that is in 2155, and it provides more detailed information on how to actually achieve those incentives. And so that is in there. We did put this in the initial draft, but we do have a proposal to remove the checklist and supplemental standards from the code and put it in appendix, what would be Appendix 12, a brand-new appendix, just so it could be more easily updated. As state code changes, as the evergreen design standards change at a state level, as we do additional implementation of universal design features, they could just be more rapidly updated if it were in an appendix. But we wanted to make sure that it was explicitly included in this draft so that the community could understand what was being adopted. When we go for public hearing, we'll actually bring your proposal that splits it out, and it becomes an Appendix 12. Same exact text, so go ahead and review it the way it is. We would just split it. In 3000, again, this is mostly new content. This is the suburban-to-urban shift. We're going to be seeing a lot of those changes. In the table of changes, it does bullet point more explicitly what all of the specific changes are, but this is going to be the bulk of the new stuff. And then in 4000, it's really just minor edits and clarifications. Again, a lot of this is stuff that we've introduced to you before, and we did an overview. In 5000, it's special regulations. This is where we have a new section for mass timber. Everything else in there is pretty much just moved. 7000 is what you previously approved under a housing package, but it's just being relocated so that it's with all of the other design standards. So there's some tiny changes in here, just so that it matches the same formatting order of, you know, very, very minor changes. So again, the questions that we have from Planning Commission on this entire chapter, you know, is anything missing? Does anything still look like there's some duplicates in there? Is anything super unclear? Just how are we doing on implementing what you thought we were going to be implementing? And so the tentative timeline is still aiming for council adoption in June. We are looking at starting the public hearing process at your next meeting for those first few sections, those first three, and then everything else, the stuff that we're introducing in this packet and what was published today, goes to public hearing on April 9. And then we'll wrap it all together with everything you've previously approved, Ian's package, and this package, put it all together with council for one single adoption and a single effective date. So as a reminder, again, though, it does include other sections. So in your next packet, all of the cleanup pieces and the repealing of 2160 and all of those little things, we'll go over them in depth so you can see them, but they're relatively minor. It's just a lot of cleanup and cross-referencing and making sure that everything matches. So, and again, before we kick into some of this, especially, there was some comments from the public that we received. I just want to also clarify that this builds upon work that you've already done. It doesn't reopen the incentive package. It doesn't reopen the Green Building Program. Those have already been through you and been recommended for approval to council. What this does is it makes sure that all the puzzle pieces are in the puzzle. And so we are not proposing to re-edit anything, but you will see in the next package that there's some additional statements that say, okay, see how this section could accomplish these, and so we're just referencing and relating things back and forth. But I did just want to clarify, we're not reopening anything you've already been through and recommended approval on. This is just for this here. But it does all tie together, and it works together to implement the vision for the flexibility, for the sustainability, for the universal design. And it just, again, it's that final puzzle piece in there to make sure that it's a complete picture, and it all works together. And again, as a reminder, we highly recommend everybody go to our 2025 Code Updates page, because all of the most recent versions, including what we published today, can be found on that 2025 code pages. The Technical Advisory Committee reports are there. All of the previous Planning Commission reports are there. Just makes it really easy to see everything that's happening all at once for this year. I am happy to take some general questions, but I would love to just go into the Planning Commission issues matrix if we're ready for that.
Let's start with the matrix, and then we can branch out to general questions from there.
Let me open that up. And again, we have a couple that we're still preparing, like a proposed edit 2. So there will be a couple that we will need to keep open, but we're hoping that we can close at least most of these tonight. The first question was just a general question about the Design Review Board. And we have provided a lot of information at previous planning commissions and at council. The design review process still takes place. The design review process still takes place. It just doesn't take place at a design review board. And so what we are doing is making sure that we're meeting all of the other requirements through new state legislation about clarity, ascertainable goals, all of those pieces. So the other thing that we're also doing is making sure that all of the policies that we just implemented in the comp plan are now reflected in the code. So all of the things where it says, hey, make sure we have, you know, a design standard for universal design, you know, so we're like following through on all of the policies that we just adopted. So Commissioner Parna is not here this evening.
So we'll wait for her to close. Sorry about that.
Yeah, no problem. It's worth speaking through them.
Right, definitely.
Happy to keep it open until she has a chance to close it. The next one was just building topologies and a question about the small building alternative. I do want to point out, in the latest version of the draft, we did update the language a little bit, and we can open that up and walk through that. But we did clarify in both of the tables where the small building alternative is mentioned, that it's really for smaller buildings as an alternative so that they don't have as many design requirements. They could take a shorter review and lesser requirements if they want to. But it is limited to buildings of a certain size, and the size depends on the zoning. We do think that it will be attractive for those small parcels, as we mentioned last
So you'd mentioned in here that there will be alternate naming for this option, share the proposals to the public hearing. So should we wait to close this until?
If you'd like to keep it open while we look at a potential renaming, that's fine.
Let's maybe keep that open.
Building topologies informed residential, neighborhood residential was the next one. This, it's really similar to what I just stated. We just kind of reworked that table to just try to make it more clear that that table wasn't intended to necessarily have a column for every single building topology. The standard applies to everything, basically.
So I had a follow-up on this one. First of all, the comment makes, oh, wait, am I the right person?
Yes.
Yes, good, okay. So for this one specifically, I thought the answer made a lot of sense. The thing that I would still like to see is, I don't think this is entirely clear to non-experts, adding the information about 2158, 7000, actually having the part that I was confused about, so just that it's in a different section of the code. The thing that I really like about that is 2158, 6000, which is multifamily, and 2158, 7000, which is single-family and middle housing, have an applicability comment that says this applies to these zoning types. So it's super clear at the beginning what we're talking about. And what I'd like to see here in 21580100, or somewhere right in here, is saying that this, there's an applicability here for these zones. And then it's just super clear, if we're not in these zones, that people can fly right by and keep looking what they're looking for, because I think this is going to make sense to zoning code experts, but it's confusing. If you searched, landed on this page, and didn't have that context, I think it would be very confusing.
Okay, I've added that as a comment from today, and I will go back and propose an edit, so we'll keep that one open.
Yeah, it's a very, very small change.
Should be a relatively minor.
And there's an applicability table, which is what I'd originally asked to edit. I agree with not editing the table. It's just if you could add the zones.
And then scope and authority, there was a question about striking number eight.
Four and five, the responses were great, so I'm good with those.
So the next one, alternative design compliance and when that would be used. Chair Weston, that was yours. Need additional information on that, or?
So I'm still, I think the checklist of the eight questions of like why this is useful would, is, makes sense now, so I think I'm okay with it. I wouldn't mind, like, a framing sentence just at, in the purpose, just saying, like, I just, I think any time you offer an alternative process, it's really helpful to say, this is who would even use this alternative. And so I think there's still room to add it. I don't think it's necessary. I think you can get there eventually by reading through the section.
And to be, to be fair, I think we do anticipate people to use it, but it wouldn't necessarily be used for every single project, but it would be, new technology would come online, or as we were talking about at our last meeting, if it was an unusual project or something that's trying to be an iconic building that's using completely different technology, they would need to get that reviewed somehow through, and that alternative design compliance just allows that to be a formal process. Instead of today, they might get it a hurdle and they go, no, right? You know, so it just creates an option for discussion of something new and unusual.
Yeah, I think there was a really good discussion about it last week, and exactly what you were saying, new technologies, et cetera, or like even a design vision that's slightly outside what's laid out here. But it, one of the public comments that we got last session was actually asking, like, how do you know if you've met the criteria of this? And I think one of the ways to, like, start that, answering that question is even just to say, like-
Explicitly in the-
When would you use this? So just being a little bit more explicit.
Okay. Well, we can definitely add another sentence to the purpose statement to help just open that creative conversation.
I think it's very small, but that would be amazing.
All right, the next couple have Commissioner Parna attached to them. The first one is just materials and context. That is one that we are keeping open. And then landmark buildings, it's Commissioner Parna and Chair Weston.
Yeah, and so we'll leave it open for Parna. I really appreciate the answer that the ADC was needed, or the ADC is the route that you would use to actually approve this? The one question I had on that, so, sorry, I'm coming back with so many things today, but it just worked out that way. So for that one specifically, there was a comment last week from Commissioner Parna about significant variations. So that would be, like, when you're talking about something truly unique or iconic, or however we want to say it, it's really, it's not a small difference, it's a big difference. And all the verbiage in 21580300 only says minor variation. So we might want to add one thing to that list that mentions a significant variation, and then probably landmark is a tricky word because it's already, it already has a meaning even in that paragraph, but if we could say something like iconic or unique or, I don't know, but something to really get across that this process is also good for really unusual buildings, that would be great. Okay. Commissioner Coleman.
So I'd send an email on this topic. I didn't see a response, but I was trying to make a comment which is similar. When we talk about iconic buildings, I put some comments in there, just some examples of like, how do we define that in terms of, is it a place where it would, you know, people would come because of that building, or they want to see it, or those kind of things? And minor alterations don't seem to make, or changes don't seem to reflect that. So I would kind of advocate a little for more description of what iconic actually means as a term, because I think we all believe that that's something we should think about, and what defines that?
That might be something that we'd have to explore with the next package of design standards. We don't have the term iconic in this section of code, so we'd have to really explore that a little bit more to see, what do we mean by that?
How do we do that? What's the next step for doing that? We have to wait until the-
So Odra Cardenas will be leading that package. That will kick off as we wrap this up, we're kicking out our next projects. That has already been budgeted, so that's going to be one of the first ones that kicks off as soon as we're done with this one.
Is there somewhere we can capture that? I could see us forgetting that, well, maybe not, knowing Parna, but I think it'd be good just to be able to capture it.
It drove a lot of conversation last week, so, or last session.
And the next one was about landmark buildings specifically, which is not generally regulated under this section of code. Number eight, yes.
Yeah, the first part was great. The second portion, I wasn't sure if that was intended to give a general update on the landmark commission.
It's just a general comment, yeah.
Okay. My understanding was we were looking to expand that commission to three persons, and I'm just seeing here one.
The way that it is right now is one. If it can be expanded in the future, that's not yet done in code, so this is a statement of how we have it currently.
Okay, and there hasn't been any progress to expand that?
I would have to connect with the folks who are working on that commission. I know Kim's on vacation, so I'll have to follow up on that one. But it is outside of the scope of this, so maybe we can try to get an answer to that and-
Sure thing.
Through a separate-
That's good. We can close that. Thank you.
Thank you. And then shore lanes and parks, we want to keep open. That is one that we're going to propose and edit to.
Thank you.
And then number 10, context-sensitive design, striking a balance between variety of building and still maintaining a relationship. We had a lot of discussion on that. We were just trying to capture the discussion here. Are we good?
Yeah, it's, it's missing a little bit for me. Maybe I wasn't being as clear as I possibly, as I should be a couple weeks ago. What I was trying to get to was like a rolling assessment of, as we build something, we have some context that it changes the nature of whether you would have approved it or not in the past, if that makes sense. So basically, like, hey, we've built these other buildings, now someone's got a design for something new. Is the situation we're currently in now make us think about this differently than it would have done before? That's kind of what I was trying to get at.
In terms of reviewing nearby buildings, or to what end?
To any new building that some, say there's, I'm just making example, short, medium, high building, right? And somebody says, oh, I want to build another high building. I mean, actually, hang on a second, that doesn't fit because we've had these other buildings, but we didn't decide that initially. So is there some review system that looks on a more rolling basis, how it fits into the current design, the current mix of buildings versus just saying, okay, we just want to mix?
So currently, how that's done is generally informally. We don't have a process to formally review for that specifically, but we do hear comments all the time, and the planners keep track of what we're hearing. Everybody keeps track of what we're hearing. If we're happy about this, or unhappy with this, or how people are perceiving this particular feature, do they love it, do they hate it? And so in general, what we do is we do kind of monitor for those things that we think might need to be changed, and that's part of the annual code cleanup process, but also staff is constantly proposing edits on a rolling basis based on that feedback that we've been getting about, are we achieving what we thought we were achieving? And in general, because of the massive amount of change that we're undergoing right now, staff is aware of the fact that we're going to have to monitor these changes to see, did we get it right? And we anticipate needing to monitor it pretty closely for a couple of years, two, three years at least, because some of them are going to take two or three years to get a pattern of activity. And then we'll probably be coming back with, okay, over the last two or three years, we've seen these projects, 90% of the time that works great, or, you know, half of the time we're struggling through this particular requirement. And so we'll take a look at that, and we'll come back and propose some changes to probably a number of different things, not just the design standards.
So that's sort of an unofficial way. Is there a more official way of doing that? You'd say, like, every quarter, we should look at-
From a building design perspective, not at this time. We are trying to go through a process right now where we're streamlining processes, so adding a new one would probably not be something that we have the capacity to do right now. But it, once we get through that process improvement phase that is currently underway, there might be a way that we could look at potentially adding in new formalized processes for that.
Yeah, that makes sense. I was trying to give an example of what I'm talking about. There's a sort of one in Paris, which is the Monparnasse building, and I don't know if you even know, like, the south of Paris is a big high tower, and they were supposed to build three, and they built one, and the council went, hang on a second, you can't have three of these. But one was already out, so it's still there, but they stopped, they stopped it because it didn't fit in with what was around it. It's a very obvious example, but that's kind of what I'm trying to reflect on, that's all, so.
I think what we've tried to do in this process with all of the modeling that we've done, with all of just, we've done such a significant amount of work trying to test the code. We've worked with developers, we've worked with property owners. I think we have tried as best as we can to capture where things might go horribly wrong and tried to deviate from there and fix that before we adopt. So hopefully, we've caught those things that might become such a really big standout. That being said, some of the changes that we're making are pretty significant, like, all of a sudden, we're going to be allowing through the incentive program a 30-story tower in Overlake, right? The first one might freak people out, you know, so it might take a couple of them to come through before we actually start seeing, okay, this does make sense, that is the intention, yes, we are working towards that. So just be aware of the fact that some of those shifts are going to be a little bit more dramatic than others, and they are intentional.
That makes sense, and we can, we can close this item. I just wanted to have the conversation here, kind of what the process was, but that's great. Thanks, Becky.
Yeah. And we'll definitely, I'll forward the idea about a formalized kind of monitoring to the folks who are looking at process. Okay, and the next one is a comment on the high-traffic corridors Commissioner Parna had, like, why are we not having certain things under state law? We're not allowed to do certain things, but we'll go ahead and keep that one open. Commissioner Weston had a comment about the illustration. Our response is, we're going to try to do that. We might not get it this package, might have to go to the next package, but I'm going to try to squeak it in.
Just if it fits. Second close, thank you.
And then a question about why are we striking the underground parking? Hopefully, we've answered that. It's just, it's not reflective of a lot of the locations anymore. Underground parking is kind of a maybe.
I really appreciated this response, especially the last portion of it. The last three words, temporary construction, de-watering, I was completely unfamiliar with.
Oh.
Led me down a rabbit hole, and I found that it could take five to 10 years for water to get to the municipal supply wells from Caras 1 and 2, and that's why we're not encouraging the stoppage of that water even for a temporary period of time. So the, the answer you guys gave was great. It was very helpful, and, yeah, I think it was, it's good that you struck the image too.
Yeah, thank you. And for those of you who haven't been on the Planning Commission long enough to be a part of that, the council directed staff, I think in 2019 or 20, to start looking at options for addressing the problems they were have when they were doing temporary construction de-watering and digging down for underground parking usually, sometimes foundation work and whatnot, and it would impact the drinking water wells. And so seeing those impacts, staff did a whole bunch of modeling and did lots of different alternatives and looking at, and the result is, we're moving forward with- And the result is we're moving forward with not allowing most temporary construction de-watering in our Cara anymore, just because our drinking water is coming directly from those wells. And so underground parking then becomes really dependent on the location. And in some cases, you're going to maybe have one story underground, and that's fine. In some cases, you could maybe even do two, like an overlake on the hill or, you know? But in a lot of cases, especially in the valley, you may only get a half-story at most. And so we want to make sure that all of the illustrations reflect something that's just a more typical construction type and not actually have something that might not be allowed because of where they're located. All right. So that wraps up the previous comments. Is there anything on those items that are going to public hearing next that we want to add to the issues matrix that you've had a chance to, to look at those particular topics?
Sorry, one more time. The packet that was from last time, or?
Yeah. These, these three sections are going to public hearing starting next Planning Commission meeting. So if there's anything on these sections that we need to add to the issues matrix so that we can go into the public hearing?
Can I just clarify? So for 2158, 700, sorry, 7,000, I know, which is the single-family and middle housing, I know that that was brought in without very many changes. I did have a question on one of that. Is that for the public hearing?
Oh, that won't go to the public hearing on the 26th. That'll go to the public hearing on the 9th.
Okay.
So I was just, my first question was anything that we need to touch on so that you feel ready for next, the next step? But yeah, we can open up the, all of the issues matrix now for all of the other topics as well.
All right. Commissioner Van Nijman.
Can you pull up the document and go to page 44?
Sure.
And while we're reading, I'll say that I did like the document as a whole. I wasn't here for the last meeting, but it reads like something largely that a layperson can actually understand.
Great. That was definitely one of our big goals, is to simplify the language. Nope. Sorry, it's just giving me partial previews. I'm getting the right pages. Sorry, technical difficulties. Let me cheat and just share the screen. Okay. She's looking at, I'm sorry, which page?
44. Okay, so. It's actually the upper part of it. And then apparently, it even starts a little bit on the previous page, but. So just a general comment. I prefer it when, because I read through it, and then there are cases where after it says purpose, or maybe it's before purpose, after the title and before purpose, there actually is a little bit of a sentence somewhere in there that adds more words to, instead of just materials and ornamentation, purpose, promote. Like those, it's kind of choppy. It doesn't, like, what, what are we doing here? Like, what do, what are materials and ornamentation? What are their purpose? They promote visual interest? Like, it just is, there were some previous examples where it says, the goal of this is to, you know?
There are a couple of them, like, that did.
Yes, there you go.
Pulling in from the old code, they'd have just a general high level.
I prefer that myself. But anyway, that's, that's just, I, I think it reads better when, when that's there. Number five and number eight are, is it five and eight or four? Four? Two, these are the same. Building ornamentation supports. The story of the building and relationships. Support the story.
Oh, yep. Five and eight are.
They're, they're the same. Also, I don't really know what that means. It's really kind of weird language to me. Like, I don't understand. Maybe an architect does, but I, what does it mean to support the story of Redmond? As a building?
I can answer that, that question as an architect. So it's related to the context, context. So if you see something, if you're like near a historic building, you might take some element of that historic building into your design.
Okay. That's what I thought. Sometimes it's just because you're not in the field. But yeah, those two are the same.
Good catch.
And I think it's, they're duplicated because one was related to the materials and the other is to ornamentation, but we can consolidate those two.
Yeah, I do think that was because we were trying to consolidate some sections. We just missed that being a duplicate. Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Other comments? Commissioner Coleman?
I'm just kind of looking at the, if someone's going to read it, there's certain places where we repeat the same part of each statement, which is making a statement and then putting the basic things underneath that. You have to read the first line, the first half of it, to work out that it's actually talking about something different at the back end. I don't know if that's something legal that we have to do, but, you know, I was trying to find the one I was looking at just now, but it's sort of, I think it's page 42, right? So we talk about the use of vegetated treatments has the potential to, blah, blah, blah. And there's like three or four or five. And I'm just curious, like, if I was a, somebody wanting to understand that space, I'm like, I'm not going to go through all that. I'm looking for X. Can we not make a statement and then put underneath that the actual options that it's referring to in a more simple way?
Yes.
It's something, it's something at work. And it's just one of those things that I see a lot. It just, I don't kind of, well, I don't understand. It's not, not as easy to, to read.
Sorry, my hearing aid was going out. So yes, that is a really good comment, that the sentence structure is not consistent. And we can reword it to be more concise, yeah.
Yes.
You can't really scan it very well. So that's all. And that is probably, I know it's probably in a lot of the different codes, but having seen it a couple of times, it's, it's, it's an observation that would be good to change for comprehension purposes, depending on how big that would be.
While we're on that section, I might jump in, because I had, I had a similar reaction to the blank wall section, where I got really sad, because I was like, oh, plants, and what is it, vegetated treatments sounded like the only option for handling blank walls. And I was like, well, why don't we do murals or something? And then I was, almost two pages later, when I was like, oh, murals are an option. So it's, there was a list in 2158, 3650 C4, that I was like, oh, if we just brought that up into A, which was the purpose, it would make it much more clear, because that specifically mentioned public artwork, like mosaics, murals, sculpture, and relief, photovoltaics, cultural elements are art, and the vegetated piece. But to have that like all right at the top would have made a lot more sense. And then, and then I had one sub-comment just on the murals. There was a rule saying they must include one plant. And I didn't understand that rule at all. I just spent forever, like, on the ground or like in the subject matter, or, I'm not sure. So. And also, if there are any limitations on murals, so either like words and lettering or themes or anything, I'd really like to see that actually just in the code. And I didn't see anything there other than one plant, so.
Okay. Thank you. Good. I did actually notice that language, I think this, I was in the last couple of days, and I was curious about that as well, about the public artwork must include a variety of plant materials. I need to go back and see where that came from, to see if maybe that's an unintended, like, did something in between get cut? So let me go back at previous versions and see. There, it may very well be that it's a completely separate section, and it's, I don't know. I'll look at it.
Yeah.
But yeah, I can definitely reorganize it so that it doesn't look like a vegetated wall. It's like the primary way of dealing, or the only way. And there is a public art section. And so what I will do is add a cross-reference to the public art section. So you can, that includes a lot of, like, the more details about things like murals, like you mentioned. So I can definitely tackle that.
Thank you. Other comments? I'm going to just keep jumping in here until someone stops me. All right. So for sensory spaces, so I was looking in the universal design section, and then specifically table 2158, 2200G. And there were a couple of things that were jumping out to me in this section and the ones immediately afterwards. So the first was talking about public spaces with sensory respite spaces. And I had real questions here, because I wasn't clear what sort of buildings this section applied to. So will all buildings include a sensory respite space? Or is this only certain buildings? Like, I was.
Yeah, and that's a really good question. So all of the tables up in here are intended to show how you would meet a specific incentive in 2155. So the checklist itself, so there's a specific line item for residential universal design in 2155. And so we're going to add that cross-reference to table, you know, 2158, 2200D. But there's also a specific line item for sensory rooms. And so we'll say, okay, sensory rooms, C 2158, or appendix 12 section, whatever. And so it is intended to be incentivized and to show that if you want that incentive, you have to have these minimum things in that space.
Amazing. Okay. So that's really helpful. I lost, I didn't catch that, reading it. So maybe just.
I think it'll be a little bit more clear once we pull it into the appendix, because we'll have some very specific language that says, to earn X, Y, and Z incentive, this checklist applies.
Perfect.
And so it's a little bit harder with it's all meshed together.
Perfect. That's exactly what I was looking for. So first, sorry, sensory respite public spaces. I had a few comments on that. First of all, can you, it's been so specific in the descriptions, and I love that. But I was wondering if you could also add that speakers and TVs shouldn't be installed in or near these areas?
I'm sorry, without my hearing aids, I'm having a hard time.
Sure. I'll say it one more time. Speakers and TVs should not be installed in or near sensory respite areas.
So a sensory room interior definitely will have speakers. A sensory respite area outdoors is intended to be an area with minimal noise. And so I believe that's the reason why that was included. I did use a lot of resource documentation. If we feel like the resource that I used, it doesn't necessarily fit our Redmond context, we can strike those things. So if you feel that that's, yeah, it's not exactly right, we can modify it.
So the interior versus exterior is really interesting to me. What I've seen, because sensory rooms is actually something that my family has made use of for disabilities, that, so I'm relatively familiar with these options and what works and what doesn't. What I've found in public spaces, programmable noise and music, or speakers that are tied to other areas of the building, or TVs, unless you have like an attendant or someone there who can, like, supervise those spaces, they often don't work well. And so I'd be wary of requiring in the code that they include that equipment.
Okay.
It was just, it, it's so hard to make those spaces in a way that serves all the different audiences that could make use of them. But that, that particular, like, piece of equipment causes so many problems and then excludes a lot of people from the space. So I think there's probably a level of revisiting there and just kind of prioritizing who you want to actually use it. Because if it's a calm-down space, or like getting people out of fight-or-flight sort of space, and often auditory equipment isn't helpful, because people can use headphones or things that they carry with them for that purpose. But having like a public system can be difficult.
Okay. So let me go back to that specifically. Just want to make sure I'm in the right table or section.
Yeah, so there, this was listed a couple of different places. So there was sensory respite was in the table. And then there was sensory integration, which was in the table. And then there was in 2158, 2300D, there's a comment on sensory rooms. And section 2D talks about programmable noise and music.
So your specific comment is potentially strike D as a requirement for sensory rooms. Okay.
Because unless there's, unless there's like a employee on site managing those, a lot of times, they don't actually function very well.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you.
Right. Or, or if it malfunctions, it can be hostile. So like, so it's just a tricky thing. Commissioner Copely?
Page 73, 2158, 7030, the building design proportionality en massing. A1, I wasn't clear whether the apparent size portion of that sentence, so I'll let you get there. It's.
I'm sorry, am I in the right section?
I think 2158, 7030. I think it's page 75 in the document.
7030?
7030. Building design proportionality en massing.
Okay, there we go.
Yeah. So number one, it says, reduce the apparent size of large new development and expansions of existing development. Is the intent there to reduce the apparent size of both of those? Or to reduce the apparent size of the first and any expansion of existing development?
It's intended to cover both of those situations, because the new code applies when you're doing major expansions. And so there's a section of code in another chapter that says, when you're doing a remodel and you hit a certain percentage point, you are no longer building under the code that you had. You now have to come into compliance with whatever the current code is. So it is intended to apply to both those situations, not just new development. However.
The apparent size portion, that's what I'm curious about.
The apparent size is more on the perception of, so.
I understand that. I'm just trying to make sure, does this mean that we're trying to reduce the apparent size of both large new and expansion of existing? Or are those separate ideas, where we're also just trying to reduce the expansion of existing development? Do you see what I mean? It says reduce at the beginning, and then I'm just trying to find out if those are really two separate ideas.
Actually, for the sake of clarity. Actually, for the sake of clarity, we don't even need "and" expansions of existing development, because that other section of code applies. So it says, "Once you hit that threshold, you have to do the new." We could just say, "Reduce the apparent size of large developments," and just leave it at that.
Okay. I think that would be great. Thanks.
Another one, back in the sensory space. For sensory integration rooms, so this is back to the table 2158, 2200G, I really liked the inclusion of, like, visual and audio and tactile sensory things, and I also wanted to encourage things that are aimed more at vestibular and proprioceptive sensory regulation, because for a lot of people, that, that gross motor is actually what's helpful. And so that can look like grab bars, pull-up bars, steps, or something that's used a lot in schools is sensory walking paths, which can be integrated, very subtle, but like, very useful, because it makes it clear that activity is allowed in a public space, or encouraged in a public space. So just adding those into the visual and tactile sensory integration spaces would be wonderful.
Okay. Could you do me a favor to make sure I'm hearing right, because my hearing, without my hearing aids, is getting all fuzzy? Could you email me exactly what you'd like to see in there? Thank you very much. Just want to make sure I capture it correctly.
Great, thank you. Other comments? Okay, I might add one more, that's, again, this was from the single-family and middle housing, so I know it's not the focus of our review, but it's the first time I've seen it in with this code, and it just caught my eye. There's a section in seven, sorry, 2158, 7040C1, where it's talking about pedestrian connections at cul-de-sacs. So, and I couldn't tell if it was for new cul-de-sacs being created, or if someone who's living on Education Hill, or Grasslon, or any of those, like, 1960s, 1970s cul-de-sac neighborhoods, if they remodel their house or put in infill housing, do they suddenly have to add one of these connections through?
Yeah, this would be really hard to go back after the cul-de-sac has been developed and the lots are done. So this is more when you have a new subdivision, or a new small platte with a couple of different lots on it. So as you're creating those new spaces, to be honest, this is not the phase that the city's in anymore, there's not going to be a lot of new subdivisions, so it's, it's going to be fairly rare that this will come into play. But where this might come into play is when we see really large lots start to be, to pulled out. There might be something where we say, hey, you know, you need to pull a connection in to the next door. And especially as we start to see sequentially, like, that large lot get divided into, oh, that's a cute little cottage development, but hey, next door is, neighbor is also wanting to do something similar, instead of cul-de-sacking, make sure that there's some kind of connection. So we'll probably see it more in those contexts, but it's not going to be, I'm redeveloping my house, I have to all of a sudden redo the platte and put an easement, or something like that in through there.
We maybe add a very small, like, even just for new cul-de-sacs, or something like that to clarify-
Something to clarify it, okay.
That it doesn't really apply, because so much of Redmond's land actually is chunked up into those styles already. And I wouldn't want to discourage people who thought that, oh, if they do this with infill housing, then they're going to have to add a connection.
Try to keep it somewhat in order of where they are. Okay. Anything else?
Commissioner Coleman.
Just a question, I was trying to look at the sustainability piece around wildfires. I mean, I was just thinking about what's, what's just happened in LA, in terms of design, looking forward, and even sort of current design. Is there anything that we would have in here around, not wildfires affect us in terms of smoke, but actual wildfires in relation to the neighborhoods?
So specifically to wildfire regulations, yes. There is, there are sections of code in here that speak to that, however, we have refrained from editing that section right now, because the fire department is currently undergoing a process where they're going to propose a code update, and so we didn't want to touch that section, or those regulations at all. They're going to come back, maybe even later this year, maybe next year, with code revisions that reflect fires, and just how that impacts our community.
Thank you, yeah, that's great.
All right, anyone, last questions? All right, so we will expect a public hearing at our next meeting, actually, next two meetings.
The next two meetings, yep.
Great. And as usual, email Becky if you have any comments in the interim.
Yeah, and Commissioner Copely mentioned before the meeting that he has a bunch of minor edits for, I mean, just email those to me directly. We don't need to go through all of that. We anticipate there's quite a lot of that in there, where, you know, you meshed those two sentences into one, and it, it's still a little confusing, maybe if you word it this way, you know, please, 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 do send those things, because clarity really is one of our biggest goals for here. So we really, really appreciate that level of detailed review. And then we'll just continue moving forward. Like I mentioned today, we did republish 2158 this afternoon, with that, the sustainability section in there, and all of the other pieces too. So we'll just continue moving forward and going through. If you do have additional questions that didn't come up tonight, because you've had more chance to look, please feel free also to email me those. If you can get them to me before next Tuesday, I can add those also to the issues matrix, and potentially try to get some answers directly in there, if we can, so that as you do your review, we can continue to build. It is a short turnaround time on this, because we are trying to make that June 30 legislative goal. It's not necessarily required for all of it, but it is required for the missing middle and the design standards work, so if we can move it forward, that'd be great. But again, we're also have, the, the other pieces are going to be coming together. There's definitions in this next package, we had definitions in the last package too. When we go to council, we have to mush it all together too, and, so there's a lot of work that we still do have to do to get to the final adoption package, but we are getting really, really super close. Your last technical report for Redmond 2050 was what was published today, the technical committee recommendation, so you are really, really, really close to being done. So again, thank you.
Looking great. So one more comment from Ms. Sherwood here.
I just want a clarification. You said there were some updated to our reading materials that were made this afternoon. Do we have the latest, or do we?
I will email you, probably tomorrow morning, not this evening, but the link to the document that was published today. It includes the new version of 2158, because what went in your packet did not have the sustainability and resiliency section. We did get that approved this morning, and so we went ahead and published it early this afternoon. So it is out there, and that, the technical committee report that was in your packet was incomplete, and we have amended it. And so it includes all of the sections that the technical committee needed to review and give you a recommendation on.
And that's in the link, then?
So that document is updated, the technical committee report, and then the 2158. The most current version, as of today, was version 2.1. And so we, I will send you an email, and it will officially be a part of your next packet, but to give you an advance, like, chance to look through everything, I'll just send you an email with a direct link.
Great, sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, next up is staff and commissioner updates.
Okay, so I think the only thing that we really had to discuss for tonight is the April 30 workshop, and I think Ian would have wanted to know too, if there are any guest speakers that you were interested in having, that we could try to recruit for that workshop. You know, please email and let us know, I won't put you on the spot right now.
Within reason.
Perhaps in Redmond.
Maybe like, like, within the city staff, add some clarity to that. But yeah, if you email, the planning commission email, or me, or Ian, and we'll start to arrange that, and then I will be sending out sometime this week, or next week, like a calendar invite for the workshop. I think that was rescheduled from spring break for April 30.
Commissioner Van Dymen.
So what I would, as we sit here and doing all of this work at a planning level and up here, one of the things that I think would be helpful for me is to understand what's that, what does that look like down the line? You know, the people who are actually using it. So not the planners, but the actual people on the front lines, what are they, what can they teach us about how, you know, maybe use some examples of previous changes, things that we've worked on, and how it ends up, what it really looks like? And just one example, and maybe it's too soon, but, like, all of these zoning changes are, in my mind, you know, you're at a planning level, you're up here, and I still, I still don't understand what that means when somebody goes to apply for a particular change. What does that really mean? What does it look like when a developer says, "I have this idea for what to do with this new zoning?"
Okay. So sort of a customer view of the process?
Yeah, right, right.
Great. It's a great idea, and any other ideas, if we can send them Ian's way, I believe?
Yeah, Ian or myself, I think.
Oh, Ian or Lauren, okay. Any other commissioner updates? No. Okay, in that case, I look for a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, then we are adjourned.